Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the February 15th, 2023 regular scheduled meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapeta?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day, Lord, you have made. Lord, we come before you right now. We ask you, Lord, for your wisdom, Lord, and your guidance, Lord, on this board today and everything that we do here, serving, Lord, your people, Lord of Hillsborough County. And, Lord, we just ask you for your protection over all of the men and women in the military that are out there serving, Lord, and protecting this great nation that you have blessed us with. And we pray for protection for all those, Lord, that are serving in law enforcement and the first responders in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapeta. Today, we have some very special guests with us and a very special recognition. I know one that I look forward to every year. And this year, we have some very nice-looking food in front of us, too, that I don't recall seeing in years past, but looking forward to that as well. So at this point, I'm going to pass things over to Commissioner Owen for the recognition.
All right. Well, good morning, everybody. You know, this is my first proclamation. The Commissioners know I'm not a big fan of proclamations, but this one right here is important, too. It may be one of the only ones I ever do, to be honest with you, because Plant City is such an important place. It's such a magical place. I want to recognize first folks that are here. Phil Waldron, the chairman of the Board of Directors; Paul Davis, president; Kyle Robinson, president-elect; Kennedy Clinton, all right, our festival queen; Jada Davis, First Maid; Addison Rayburn, court member; Fay Ramirez, court member; and Kaylee Salmon, court member. Also, we have Commissioner Jones, and we have Mayor Kilton here today. We have Kenneth Parker and my heroes, our strawberry growers. You know, growing up in Valrico, strawberries was a way of life out there. You know, I used to think this time of year that strawberries just showed up, and it was magic. I remember being a little kid, sitting at the sink where my father would get a pallet of strawberries, and he would wash them and hand them down to me. And we'd just, I'd sit there and watch cartoons and eat strawberries until I got sick. And there's so many great things about strawberries. There's also strawberry shortcake, strawberry pizza, strawberry shakes. But Kenneth, my favorite thing to do is just to grab those strawberries right off the vine and eat those medallions fresh. So I know that's Kenneth's favorite as well, too. But come to find out later on, as I grew up, I realized that strawberries, it's not magic. It's far from it. It's hard work. It's competition with foreign countries. It's science. It's mad science. It's dealing with weather, pesticides, and things like that. So I commend the strawberry growers. We are thankful for you all. We don't just have the best strawberries in the county, in the state, in the country. We are the standard on this globe for strawberries, and it's because of the hard-working folks right here in Plant City, Florida. I don't know if there's anything that Hillsborough County can say that we're the best in the world at. We used to be the best in the world at football, but I think that's long gone now. But I am just so proud to represent Plant City. It's just such an honor to have you folks here today. Welcome to County Center. So this time, I'd like to have the court come up. You know, Paul, Kyle, and elected representatives, come on up. I'm going to read a proclamation. And we have proclamations, one general and then one for the whole court as well. Sherri, are you, Sherri here? If you want to hold this to them, I'll read this as well. All right. "Plant City is the winter strawberry capital of the world, with about 12,000 acres grown annually by members of the Florida Strawberry Growers Association. Since 1930, the Florida Strawberry Festival has united the community by bringing together people to honor farmers and celebrate the bountiful strawberry harvests, a $1 billion industry in central Florida. The Florida Strawberry Festival draws, entertains, and enlightens over 500,000 local residents and visitors from around the world each year, introducing them to Plant City agriculture, arts, businesses, horticulture, and industry. The Florida Strawberry Festival has long been recognized as the number-one festival or fair in the great state of Florida, as well as one of the top 35 events in North America, a true destination where people can enjoy the world's greatest entertainment, educational exhibits, friendly competition, and attractions. 2023 Florida Strawberry Festival Queen Kennedy Clinton, First Maid Jada Davis, and the court members Addison Rayburn, Fay Ramirez, and Kaylee Salmon serve as the festival's goodwill ambassadors. The Florida Strawberry Festival Board of Directors, Board Chairman Phil Waldron, President Paul Davis, President-elect Kyle Robinson, and many local volunteers and civic organizations devote countless hours to the success of the event. Mr. Davis has been festival president and general manager for nearly 15 years. And each year, the celebration has grown in size, popularity, and prestige, a testament to his outstanding leadership. The festival serves about 200,000 strawberry shortcakes a year, and the theme 'We Have a Winter' was chosen to mark this year's 88th event in celebration of the mouth-water delight, which was named Florida's official dessert during a bill-signing ceremony at the Florida Strawberry Festival grounds last year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare March 2nd through March 12th, 2023, as Florida Strawberry Festival Days in Hillsborough County, and encourages everyone to celebrate the festival's rich heritage and strawberry harvests that contribute so much to the community, region, and state. And we wish President Davis a happy retirement executed this 15th day of February 2023, signed and executed by all seven county commissioners." Okay, and we have, I'd like for some folks here, if you want to take some pictures, we're going to take a picture also in the back with all the county commissioners. But I wanted to invite Paul, if you wanted to come forward first and just say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's truly an honor to come here and this distinguished board, and thank you for having us, and thank you for welcoming. And I have to thank Kenny Parker and his team. They got up this morning early and made these shortcakes, and then we had to get through security, and they all had to taste them. That might have been a little stretch, but thank you for this honor, and I think our mayor had something he wanted to say. I'll let you call the next person, but thank you, sir.
Yes, great. Mayor?
Thank you, Commissioner Owen, and thank you for having us, fellow commissioners here today. It's really an honor. It's always a great day in Plant City and happy to bring some of that joy from the east side of the county. When we talk about the festival, and Commissioner Owen alluded to the magnitude of the strawberry industry in Plant City, but it's not just strawberries. It's all of the agriculture that we really celebrate at the Florida Strawberry Festival. And it's not just about the half, or the 500,000 people that come into our community for the event. That's an ancillary benefit. It's really, when you look at it, it's about our young people. It's about these young ladies that are here. It's about the FFA students that are showing animals and their horticulture and the rich values that they get from those experiences and what that means to them and to their families and how we build community in Plant City. When we have 2,000 volunteers that come out for this event, it's a community event, and it's these young women that are going to be the future leaders in our community. Our former Strawberry Festival Queen Ashley Moody is now our state attorney general. We build leaders in Plant City through the Florida Strawberry Festival, and they give countless dollars back into our community as a result of it. So I really want to thank the Florida Strawberry Festival for all that they do for Plant City, especially for our young people. Thank you.
Mayor.
So, well said. Okay, at this time, let's invite the queen up here to say a few words and introduce your court again as well. And if any of the ladies want to come up here and introduce yourself to afterwards, please do. Come on up over here, Kennedy.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for waking up so early to see all of us. At this time, I am your 2023 Florida Strawberry Festival Queen Kennedy Clinton. Starting here on my right is First Maid Ms. Jada Davis, Court Member Addison Rayburn, Court Member Fay Ramirez, and Court Member Kaylee Salmon. We would just like to say on, I would just like to say on behalf of the entire court that we are so grateful for this opportunity to not only represent our community of Plant City, but also to represent all of Hillsborough County, for everyone who comes to the festival. As Mr. Mayor Nate Kilton said, we have about half a million people come to the festival every year, and that is a number that only continues to grow. And we are so proud to be ambassadors of this festival and ambassadors of our community and our entire county. So we just hope to put a smile on everyone's faces and hopefully put a smile on your all faces with the shortcakes that the Florida Strawberry Growers Association brought. So thank you so much for this opportunity, and here's to a great year.
Thank you. Outstanding. Mr. Parker, do you want to come up here, or is anyone on behalf of the growers and just say a couple of words before we wrap up?
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to all of the board members here today. I want to extend an open invitation to each of you. You're always welcome to come out to our office there in Dover, at the Florida Strawberry Growers Association, and pick strawberries. We have the world's best strawberries right outside our back door, and you're all welcome to come. Enjoy. On behalf of the 65 farm families that make up the strawberry industry, we thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for recognizing the strawberry and what it means. It's a billion, over a billion-dollar economic impact to Hillsborough County, eastern Hillsborough County particularly. And it's a great day for these girls here to be recognized, that they're going to do a great job, and thanks for all you do. And Strawberry Sue, Tiffany, and Ms. Brienne, they got up really early and made these shortcakes. We hope you enjoy them.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for making the shortcakes. I wanted to add a little different twist and do something different this time around, so we'll have to think of something different for next year. So again, I want to thank the great folks of Plant City, the growers, the court, mayor, commissioner. Also, Mr. Robinson, who's going to be coming in as the next president. You've got really big shoes to fill. Again, we thank you for all your service to the Strawberry Festival in Plant City, Florida. All right, well, I don't know, Bonnie, if it's appropriate for us to eat while we do our commission meeting, so we'll probably have to take some of those back to the refrigerator. Thank you again for bringing that.
Don't take that shortcake too far, all right? I might, I might. All right. Well, excellent recognition, Commissioner Owen. At this point, Bonnie, may I review the changes to agenda?
Hard to follow that. We have two items that have been deferred. The first one is accommodation presented by Commissioner Harry Cohen on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, recognizing the 2023 Tampa Pride Street Festival and Diversity Parade. This is deferred to March 1st. And the other item that has been deferred to a date to be determined is Item A1, which is to approve the Community Development Block Grant Funding Agreement between Hillsborough County and enterprising Latinas for public facility improvements. We have a few revisions or corrections to the agenda. Item A48 has an error of 10 cents, which is to approve and execute the first modification of two existing blanket purchase agreements for ongoing and as-needed temporary staffing services for an additional cost should be of $206,451.41. Item B2 is now a time certain at 11 o'clock. This is to approve the Hillsborough County Transportation Plan for the use of the $569,782,845 collected as a result of the 2018 citizen-led transportation surtax referendum. Then we have Items 4, time certain, is just the one item. Item B2 at 11 o'clock to approve the Hillsborough County Transportation Plan for the use of the monies collected as a result of the 2018 citizen-led transportation surtax referendum and authorize the county administrator to transmit the final plan to the Florida Legislature prior to the beginning of the 2023 legislative session, as requested by the Florida Department of Revenue. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the changes. Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
All right, now we'll go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However it is requested, at the same time, when you address the board, that comments are not directed personally at a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. The board has set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which their requests to speak have been received. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Up to three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. We have six speakers this morning. First one is Iliana Centron. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I am Iliana Centron, Deputy Director of enterprising Latinas, Community Economic Development Organization focused on women's economic empowerment, based in Way Mama and serving in the South Shore Region. On behalf of our CEO and founder, Liz Gutierrez, and our Board of Directors, I would like to begin my public comments with words of appreciation. Thank you to our District Four Commissioner Michael Owen for coming to meet us days after the election in November. We look forward to working with you to expand economic opportunity in our region. Thank you to Commissioner Cameron Sapeta for agreeing to meet with us next week. We look forward to welcoming you in Way Mama. We also appreciate Commissioner Cohen for having met us and for scheduling time to hear an update about our work next month. And thank you as well to Commissioner Kemp for your support over the years and for championing equity strategies on low-income families in Way Mama. We look forward to introducing enterprising Latinas to Commissioners Hagan, Myers, and Wostol, so we can share details about our work and our past and current agreements with Hillsborough County. We will follow up with your respective offices for scheduling. And we're proud to say that in only eight years of operations, enterprising Latinas is an organization in good standing that continuously turns community challenges into economic opportunities with the support of over 25 local and national partners. Today, I want to report on the impact of what Hillsborough County's investments have allowed us to achieve as a result of increases in capacity at our Way Mama Opportunity Center. In the last year, we supported 200 individuals through workforce, entrepreneurship, and skill-building programs. Among them, 50 entrepreneurs received training and technical assistance to launch or grow their businesses, including 15 business owners that were connected to commercial loans from a national partner totaling $350,000. In recent months, we have engaged over 100 residents in free digital literacy courses, including some offered at the Way Mama and Ruskin Senior Centers. We currently host four agencies that provide services from our center, from Career Source Tampa Bay and HCC, as well as Hillsborough County Public Schools, that is teaching English classes and recruiting personnel from our site. Our programs and events welcome over 2,000 people per year and are offered in English and in Spanish by a bilingual team of 15 individuals. While we strategically target women because we're committed to addressing wage and wealth gaps for them, in fact, women bring in their husbands and their kids to benefit from our programs, too, which follows what we wholeheartedly believe, that when women do well, their children, families, and communities do better. We appreciate the county's partnership and your support, Commissioners, for contributing to our story of success nurturing a broad network for women's economic prosperity in our region. We will look forward to continuing our collaboration and remain available to share more information and answer questions about our work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Jeanette, is it Coontz? She's a virtual.
Chairman, Jeanette did not call in.
Okay. Dr. James Davison, also a virtual.
Dr. Davison, are you there? Dr. Davison, if you can hear us, you're being called for public comment. Chairman, he doesn't seem to be responding.
Okay, I'll come back to him in a few minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Middlebrooks.
I just, I'm here for the $539 million. I just would like to know how to get information on this daily, because it seems like there's never anything on the news about it. Maybe once a month, they say, tiny bit. And I was just wondering if you could answer that question for me.
All right, thank you. If you stand over to the side, we'll have a staff member get with you. Thank you for coming down, Ms. Middlebrooks.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for allowing me time to speak. My name is Corey Francis. I'm here, my official capacity as district aide to Representative Beltran. Representative Beltran waves in opposition to Agenda Item B4. This body should not adopt the proposed 2023 Hillsborough County State Legislative Program as currently drafted. Representative Beltran respectfully requests that you deliberate and strike or redraft the local government operations and Home Rule Section of proposed 2023 Hillsborough County State Legislature program. And that is all I'm here to say today.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Kristin Green, virtual?
Chairman, Kristin did not call in.
Okay. We'll go back to the two virtual speakers, see if they're connected. Jeanette Coontz, did Jeanette sign in?
Jeanette has not signed in.
Okay.
We can check with Dr. Davison. Dr. Davison, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Kristin, go ahead.
Yes, I'm here to talk about B1 and B2. I want the board to be aware that the program that they're putting into the tip is part of a long-range transportation plan that is not statistically constrained. And in the words of the Federal Highway Administration, plans such as this would be nothing more than a wish list, not a transportation plan. I would like to have the board to relate, have engineering and operations relate the change in maintenance costs and estimates, which have gone up 100% over the last six, seven years. And at that rate, any plan you come up with is not going to be workable. Again, I would urge you to also tell them about the revenue constraints that you, Operation and Engineering Operations told the public during the public meetings and their presentations to the board, that the revenues were not available for the long-range transportation plan. I think you are mandated to do this by the interlocal agreement and the federal code, that when there's a 10% change in projects, that they have to be informed. So as far as B2 goes, it's kind of ridiculous that not knowing how much money you have coming in or is going to be available, that you are going to send them a plan of projects that you want to include. There's so many other things you could do with this money. I told you back in January that this is a continuation of the same practices, the same course of action that led up to the point we're in now, and that's with nothing. You're going to take all this money, this windfall of money, you're going to spend it all, and there'll be some projects done, and then what do you do? There is no plan going forward, and you need that plan to maximize this windfall of money. Lastly, I was hoping that the board would send a letter to the governor, asking him to make the two appointments to the heart that he has not appointed yet, because they need all the help they can get, and to reconsider his transit ban on the monies in B2. 5% would be great, that'd be $25 million, but the municipalities and the counties will be able to appropriate that money if it comes in. But if you don't do that, you'd better find 11,000 people a new way to work, because that's how many people use it to go to work. So those people voted for the tax, and they deserve something. So there's a lot of work to do on transportation, and it's not going to be done if we continue to sit down the same road. So I urge you to form a group, any group you want, to investigate this, to sit down with Engineering and Operations, to begin to change the way we're going. I appreciate your time, and you all have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you, Dr. Davison, for your comments. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve consent?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Kemp. Second, Commissioner Myers, no comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
All right, Bonnie, you want to introduce the first item?
Thank you. We can go to the regular agenda, and the first regular agenda item is Item B1. This is to approve of the list of the projects for submission to the Hillsborough County Planning Transportation Organization for prioritization, and John Patrick is here to present this item.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Bonnie. HTV, if you can bring up the presentation, please. There we go. So the next slide, please. Yeah, so the, like Bonnie said, this is a list of projects that we are going to be transmitting once you accrue to the TPO for their prioritization for funding in the future. So the tip, to give you a little background, the Transportation Improvement Program has two parts. The first part is the first five years of the program, which is basically funded, and the next part is the unfunded priority list. So each year, the TPO asks every jurisdictions and agencies within Hillsborough County to provide their priority list of projects for them to prioritize as a whole. So the tip includes all jurisdictions, city of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City, and and Hart as well, and DOT as well. So the next slide. So we, so the TIP is prioritized in these five categories. These are the five priority categories. The first is state of good repair, which is paving, bridge, and stormwater maintenance. This is basically maintenance part. The next is Vision Zero, that's the second. Third is Smart City. You can see that, I'm not going to read that, but number five is a major investment where the major BRT kind of projects that are millions of dollars of projects, large projects like road widening reside. So those are the priorities which we, which the TPO has, and our projects will be prioritized in those buckets. Next slide, please. So as we select these projects, these are the five screening criteria, the seven screening criterias that we use. The first one is it needs to meet the eligibility for receiving federal funds, so we select projects that are eligible, that could be eligible. And we also look for projects that are not immediate need, that are needs in the future because the funding is available only in the outer years, '27, '28 fiscal year. So we try to look for projects that are not immediate needs. We also look for projects that are in the current CIP, CIP which are partially funded, we need more funding. One of the reasons is because a lot of these grants require us to have a matching funding, and matching funding is up to 50%. And so the CIP money that you guys have allocated can be used as the matching grant, matching for the grant. And some of these, some of these projects require the project to be complementary to DOT projects, and some, in fact, some projects say that they would prefer projects on the DOT road. So we look for projects that are complementary, that would, that would provide relief to the DOT system, so those projects become eligible. We need to be ready to design these projects to the DOT and the federal standards if need be, based on some requirements of the grant. So, and also, we want to make sure that there are projects on the list that satisfy county's initiative, like economic development, or perhaps this new school has been built and we need funding to widen the roadway in front of that school. So those are the seven screening criteria that we use to bring projects to you, Commissioners. So the next slide shows you the, go to the next slide? Yes, thank you. So the next slide is the current list of projects. This map is in your backup as well. There are 20 projects, 23 projects in total. 20 of them have been on the list previously, previous year. We did receive funding for three projects, and so those are not on the list. We are proposing to add three new projects to the list. The first one is Van Dyke Road Widening Project, Lithia Pinecrest, and the third one is Smart Traffic Network Project, which is county-wide, basically upgrading our traffic signals and cabinets with new technology. So those are the three projects that we are asking you to include in the list. And in your backup, there is a table that actually shows you how those projects fit in those five categories that I showed you before that the TPO uses. Currently, you can see the priority on this screen on the right side, and those are the priority numbers. From nine to 94, we have those lists of projects on the priority. So the ask in front of you today, Commissioner, go to the next slide, please. It is a motion to approve this list of projects to be transmitted to the TPO, to be included in the upcoming update of the TIP. And this approval does not, does not have any funding associated with it at this moment, so there is no real impact to our budget at this time. That's our request.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this, when I had this meeting with you, this was pretty eye-opening to me. When I looked at, could you pull up the priority list, just so we have those in order so everyone can see that? There you go. When I, you passed it, the prior one. When I looked at this list, to me, it just, it just sees how out of touch we are with, not just majority, the overwhelming majority of people in Hillsborough County. If you could clear, the one that's number five on the very bottom of the list, major projects for economic growth, I think you alluded to it, Mr. Patrick, is that road widening? Would that be those type of projects?
Yes.
We have smart cities ahead of road widening? Is that what, is that what that priority is from the TPO?
Smart cities, that is.
What makes it smart cities? Just technology? What could you?
Technology to traffic signal upgrades, making it easier for traffic to flow.
And real choices for not driving, could you maybe explain, elaborate on that?
Real choice for when not driving is alternative to automobiles, basically is bus service, enhancing the bus service, trails and sidewalks, sidewalk gaps, those are the kind of projects.
And so when you're, when we're making grant requests, then, based on this priority list, is that would make certain roads go to like number 90 and 94 on the list? Or tell us how that works? Because of this priority order, how does that work when you go, go, go request a grant, for example?
Good question, Commissioner. So when you go for these grants, they request you to fill out a form that asks you, where is it in the priority of your projects, list of projects? I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Priority list of projects, where are they? So what happens is, when you have projects that are for major projects, when you say it's 95 on the list, so that doesn't sound really good, you go for priority and say this is our top priority, but yeah, it's 94, but, but we have to explain how we prioritize, and then, and we have had success regardless, but, but it is still from a, from a, it's a challenging, a challenging prospect when you go to funding.
I mean, would we get a grant for anything, say, over 60 and above? Is the likelihood of us getting some type of grant if something is prioritized so low? Is it extremely low, or how much do they weigh that?
We have, we have received fundings that are projects, major projects, on the bottom of the list, but when the TPO allocates funding, along with DOT, the top 10 projects or 15 projects, they are able to annually allocate funding. It doesn't get far beyond that 10, 15 projects and allocation, but at the grant level, that's a different question. We really emphasize the need for the project, so that's, that's very.
And I do think Vision Zero, Smart Cities, Real Choices, that's important stuff, but I think this priority list is, it's not reflective of the wants of the, like I said, overwhelming majority of the people in Hillsborough County. That is why, you know, I want to make a motion here for us as a board collectively to send correspondence to the TPO Chair and to the TPO Policy Board as follow. I move to direct staff to send correspondence to the TPO Board stating the priority list of the Board of County Commissioners to be as follows. One, good repair and resilience. Two, major projects for economic growth. And then three, I believe that two, three, and four can all, is, can all be included in one. Vision Zero, smart choices, and real choices when not driving.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Owen, second by Commissioner Wostal, and I don't see anyone else in the queue right now, but a couple of comments. You know, someone that's championed Van Dyke Widening Project for probably 15 years, and I've also always supported Lithia Pinecrest Widening back when the MPO, I think, actually removed it from the list many, many moons ago. I'm very pleased to see the, these projects being added, and I think Commissioner Owen was kind of going down this path, I think, but the reality is, those projects are never going to receive grant funding at the current priority level. And the TPO will need, and this is, ultimately, we're making a recommendation to the TPO, right?
That's correct.
I mean, so, the TPO is going to need, and I'm, I'm not on TPO, I know several board members are, but TPO is going to have to, you know, change the prioritization levels, either change, revise, or reprioritize in order to, for those projects to ever have a chance to get funded. So I fully support the motion, and hopefully, TPO will, you know, change their priorities. Commissioner Wostal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was a good point that I, I didn't see in the PowerPoint slide. I didn't, I guess I didn't look at it in that way, but realistically, right, it is a prioritization list, and ultimately, doing these major improvements would improve the rest of the items overall, so that's, I, I support the motion, and I do believe that if we reprioritize these, that we would help the other goals. And a good point that was in a briefing with the Director of the TPO when she was asked recently, is how much realistically on the Vision Zero can we accomplish, which all of us here support saving lives. I hope I can speak for all of us when I say that anyways. And the answer, of course, was that they know they can't engineer their way out of it, so the best way you can do is to reduce congestion and improve it, improve it through improving functionality in the road systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp.
Do we know how these priorities, I assume that these priorities are kind of, the lists are in line with other TPOs around the state and how, how they're putting out categories. And, I mean, is that, do we know?
So it, this is part of the long-range transportation planning effort, and there are some requirements from the federal government, but they're on performance measures, and so it's, it's kind of working with the Board of the TPO that they come up with this prioritization methodology.
Right, and there's this, there's this list of priorities that's always massively longer in every single category than can ever be funded. And what it is, is it's, it's like this massive list in F.B. the state has what they determine are their priorities in each region, and according to their needs and their priorities that they mark. So for instance, if you don't have things on the safety category, but they're intending to spend this allocation at the state on safety, they'll just, you know, pick those safety projects, whatever. This is not, I don't believe that changing these prioritizations kind of gets you to where you want to be. When you name the big, you know, if you name the big roads like Van Dyke or Lithia Pinecrest, as you've heard here, something like 200 million to widen Lithia Pinecrest for a few miles. I think it was 80 million on Van Dyke to widen it for a couple of miles. So obviously, the, those are going to be more sparing and, and, you know, than, than other, than the, how many projects you could do for intersection, transportation, safety, whatever. But FDOT is just going to look at everything we list there, and they're just going to pick a few. And frankly, they're required by state law to mostly focus on the CIS, the Strategic Intermodal System, meaning basically the interstates, for where their allocations are. It's not even, that's not even on the list that comes from the county. So I would just say, I mean, anything that gets on this list is going to be looked at by FDOT, and they're going to hear from anyone, and I just, I'm not, I will be voting no on this. I don't want to change the categories, I don't want to, you, you know, as long as something's on the list, it will be considered. And it doesn't matter if it's number two on the list, or if it's number 122 on the list. If, if FDOT is down and that's what a priority is to fund it, this does not, this is not really a priority list as much as it's just a list. So I would just, I'll be voting no. I don't feel comfortable doing this this time. I don't think it's something that will enhance what you all are looking at or will help us in the county in overall projects and, and where we're going, so I'll, I'll be a no vote, but I think it's, it's not, I think we really should have more guidance before, before doing this, but actually, I just, I guess I think it could hurt us. But by not, I guess if we don't remove any projects, it doesn't really hurt us because they're going to pick what, what they have, and some things sit there, I can guarantee you, for decades, if that's not a priority in the state for funding. But as long as it's on the list, it can, if there's some momentum for it, it can be considered.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. I don't really think, this is the TPO's list, not our list. And where I would disagree with you, Commissioner Owen, is I think, given the fact that we are the number one or number two place in America of our size for bicycle and pedestrian fatalities, I would suggest that the list, as it's currently, as it's currently comprised, does reflect a consensus of, of opinion. And if it's going to be changed, if the priority is going to be changed, they're going to have to be changed at the TPO itself. I mean, how this board expresses itself is, is only relevant insofar as how all of us vote as individuals, once we actually go into the TPO and, and vote up or down on, on adjusting the priorities. I think that where the rubber really meets the road is on what we do with the actual dollars that we have control over, not necessarily something like this where, I tend to agree with Commissioner Kemp, it almost, I think, is, is, I don't know, I don't think that it's, it's not our list, it's the, it's the TPO's list, so we should affect it there rather than, than here. That's, that's, I guess, my, my view of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Owen.
Yeah, and thank you for your comments, Commissioners. I guess, real quick, Mr. Patrick, so the priority list, does that affect those numbers that are in the far-right column on priority? Does it affect the number of importance?
It shows the importance of the, of the projects in Hillsborough County.
Okay, good. And, and yeah, so I think that's important, and I, I understand that this is just correspondence we're sending to the TPO, but I think, I think that would matter. I think that it would, it would, it would matter to me as a member of the TPO if, if the Board of County Commissions or the City Council sent correspondence. As a matter of fact, guess what? We're doing it today. We're doing it today on B2. We are sending correspondence to the legislature, who has not asked for these, for any correspondence, or our recommendations on how to spend money. So we're actually doing it in the next one, where, so I think, in essence, this is almost kind of the same thing. So while I appreciate the Commissioner's comments, and I completely understand that this is up to the TPO at the end of the day, I still think that this motion's proper, and again, for, even if it's for self-preservation, this order right here of importance, if that's what this is, this is completely out of step with not just, again, the majority of Hillsborough County, but the overwhelming majority of Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cohen, thank you for your comments. I chair the TPO. We have four members on the TPO. Commissioner Owen, your comments, I think, should be addressed at our TPO meeting. What staff is asking is to approve the list, to send it to the TPO, and then let us, that board, reprioritize what we would like to see happen on the TPO. It's just a list. It's not changing anything. They're just saying, our projects, going over to TPO. When we get to the TPO Board meeting, then we can iron it out, press it, whatever, delete whatever, but give staff the opportunity to support, and I'm going to support the recommendations going over to TPO. I chair the TPO, and then let's have that discussion. And if we want to rework everything going forward, let us do it in TPO. It's just a recommendation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Wostal. If you have any other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioner Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Bonnie, next, sir.
I'm sorry, that motion did include approving the list, correct?
I think we'll have to do that next, a separate motion.
Okay.
Or not, or vote on that separately.
All right. So now we'll take up a motion on the staff. So now we'll take up a motion on the staff recommendation to add the new projects and the entire list.
Second.
I'll move.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Winstall. No comments on that. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you. The next item is Item B3. This is to adopt a resolution authorizing a land exchange between Hillsborough County and Tampa Bay Water. And as John Mueller, Director of Real Estate Services, is coming to the podium, I'd really like to thank our staff, who has worked so diligently on this, especially Mr. Mueller and various other staff, and also Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner, former Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Winstall, who work with us with Tampa Bay Water's staff. Thank you.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. John Mueller, Director of Facility Management and Real Estate Services. Agenda Item B3 is a request for your approval of a resolution and land exchange agreement with Tampa Bay Water for a 27.4 acre site on Columbus Drive, directly opposite our Public Safety Operations Center, referred to as PSOC. With an approval of this item, Tampa Bay Water is prepared to present this item to their Board on Monday, February 27th, for consideration and approval. HTV, if you could just put up the slide of the land exchange, please. Both the county and TBW have negotiated this agreement so that each organization's future planning needs within the Falkenburg corridor will be met. For the county, approximately 17 acres of the 27.4 will be used for an emergency management warehouse, which will improve our public safety response in all areas, including the rapid activation of over 56 shelters during a major storm emergency. I would note that the Board has already approved 28.9 million in capital improvement project budget for the land and construction. Our intent is to begin pre-planning and design work concurrently with the due diligence activities prior to closing, with our goal of having a new warehouse ready in a best-case scenario for the 25-storm season. The remaining 10 acres provide a potential future site to be assessed for other county operations, which require, which will require a larger site. These 10 acres will be held until such time a funding request is presented and considered for Board approval. Of note is that any parking created on these new county sites can be leveraged for much-needed additional tournament sportsplex parking on weekends and evenings. Our partners, Tampa Bay Water, will receive a total of 16.1 acres, 13.5 of which is contiguous to their existing surface water treatment operation, to allow for their expansion. We've also exchanged 2.6 acres of land in close proximity to Columbus Drive to provide them with a site for light maintenance or admin expansion as they see fit for their future needs. As a requirement of closing, in accordance with the Hillsborough County Land Development Code, we'll work together to subdivide and plat the original 443-acre county Tampa Bay Water property that resides in Falkenburg. The total payment for this exchange is $2,136,750 and estimated closing cost of $375,000. HTV, you can remove the slide. I would like to thank the Board for your support in funding this important project, Deputy County Administrator Horwiddell for his leadership in ultimately finding a win-win exchange, and our partners at Tampa Bay Water, General Manager Chuck Carden, Andrea College, who's here today with Tampa Bay Water Real Estate, for their efforts in finalizing the proposed exchange, which is much needed for this county. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make a comment about this. Over the past two years, there have probably been four or five times where it has been necessary for Hillsborough County and Tampa Bay Water to work together to try to solve some issue that only applies to Hillsborough County, that doesn't apply to the other member governments that make up Tampa Bay Water. We had the issue related to augmenting our pumps in South County to increase flows, the issue of choosing a route for the pipeline that's going to be, going to be built in South County. And Commissioner Smith carried a lot of water for Hillsborough County in making sure that Tampa Bay Water and its Board saw why we wanted a different route than what they were suggesting. And they ultimately went with what we wanted to do. And then on this, where really, this was something that Hillsborough County needed to get done. And Tampa Bay Water has really worked with us in order to make it happen. And I bring all of this up because there are so many areas where, when we start working regionally, there are disagreements and there are differences between governments and individuals on different sides of the bay and in different areas of the region. But at Tampa Bay Water, at least during the time that I have been there, I have seen a real effort made to understand the unique challenges that Hillsborough County faces because we are growing so fast and because all of the water that we're dealing with actually comes from Hillsborough County and from the city of Tampa. So I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank the Tampa Bay Water staff for working with our staff. I want to thank our staff for all the behind-the-scenes diligence that it took to get us to this point. And I just wanted to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Winstall?
Mr. Chair, I just didn't want to take false credit. You know, Tom Brady throws the ball 15 times for 99 yards, running back, runs one yard, makes a touchdown, celebrates. I didn't really do anything on this, and I'm glad it is getting done. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Winstall, I've learned a long time ago that we get blamed for a lot of stuff that we have, we're not involved in. So the rare instances where you can take credit for something you had nothing involved with, take it and run with it. If I can give you any advice, that's one thing I would tell you. Commissioner Kemp?
I'll just make a, this is a win all around. And I liked it that Commissioner Cohen said Commissioner Smith carried a lot of water. No, pun intended, I guess, but she really did. And I'd just like to acknowledge that because I know that she worked really, really hard. But our staff as well, I know, were very, very diligent about working for Hillsborough County's needs. And it was a, it was a big, big, big lift. And I think it's appropriate to really acknowledge it at this time. But this is very, very good, I think, that we can finally look to at the land that we need to, I guess that's the, yeah, the land that we need to do the emergency center. I'm looking forward to that because we've had no storage area for vast supplies. And so this, in so many ways, is a really excellent plan. And again, I just want to, I think it's been a lot, a lot of work. And so I want to acknowledge that.
Agreed. As someone that served on Tampa Bay Water for a couple of years, I can tell you, I know how challenging that Board can be. And so my hat's off to Commissioner Cohen, to Commissioner Smith, and to all of our staff for making this happen. This is certainly a win-win. It's going to help us in a number of areas, including addressing parking challenges that we have at our tournament sportsplex that's absolutely killing it every weekend. So this is definitely a great item. Happy to support it. So the motion approved was Commissioner Cohen. Who seconded it? Commissioner Kemp. No other comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Bonnie, next item?
Thank you. The next item is Item B4. This is to adopt the proposed 2023 Hillsborough County State Legislative Program. And Brandon Wagner is here. And he has a new person to introduce, Cameron Pennant, as well.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members. Brandon Wagner, Chief Administrator for Government Relations and Strategic Services. I'd like to begin by introducing Cameron Pennant to my right. He is our new Director of Government Relations for State Issues. We stole him from Charlotte County, had previous service in the Florida House of Representatives as an aide in the Clerk's Office and as a policy analyst. So he comes to us with good experience and will be a valued member of our team. Members, before you, is the annual state legislative program for your consideration. Thank you for the opportunity to brief with most of you and share some of the background on this. As you're aware, the legislative session starts in a couple of weeks. And what's before you is the position of the Board on a variety of issues. This is the program of the Board. So anything that changes, that you wish to add, subtract, multiply, or divide, is done by this Board. And we will abide by those instructions. We would ask for, also, let me add to that, too. We'll be providing updates throughout the legislative session. You'll get daily updates on issues that pertain to your program or issues that pertain to local government in general. You'll get a weekly summary of the activities. And then at the end of session, you'll get a comprehensive summary report with a full breakdown of what happened to the program, in addition to all the laws that were passed, so that you have reference for those, for that research. With that, Commissioners, happy to answer any questions and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Brandon. I do have one question. We heard from Representative Beltran, I guess legislative aide this morning. Can you or Bonnie can just clarify our position in what she was referencing?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, in the legislative program, under Local Government Operations and Home Rule, which is Page 2 of the program, there are four items. One of those items asks the Board to oppose legislation that would eliminate or substantially raise statutory limits on liability for tort claims against the state or local governments. Over the last couple of years, there's been legislation filed that would raise the current caps from $200,000 and $300,000 respectively to a significant level. Legislation been filed this year, House Bill 401, that would raise that number from $200,000 per incident to 2.5 million per incident and a, per person. And then an incident increase from 300,000 to 5 million. Now, there is companion legislation in the Senate, which raises those numbers to 400,000 and 600,000 respectively. The House bill has cleared one committee of reference in the House. It has two remaining. The Senate bill's been referred to appropriation. So they're still in the process. There's still negotiations, I'm sure, to occur. But this position is consistent with what the Board put into its program last year, which is to try to maintain some reasonability in the caps to not create a financial issue for the county. There's always the opportunity for a claims bill to be filed at the state, should there be a need to pierce that statutory claim amount. The county attorney's office is very adept at handling these issues and do a great job on behalf of the county. There's been instances where there has been a need to raise those caps, and the county has acted responsibly. So this simply asks the Board to give us instructions to oppose a bill that would go significantly higher than the existing caps. If they need to be raised, then those considerations can be discussed. But that kind of a jump is a very significant jump at one time. So, Mr. Chairman, that's a long-winded explanation to the question.
All right. Thank you, Brandon. Commissioner Owen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I looked at this kind of late. And I'll be frank, I don't know, Commissioner Myers, what's important to you in the state level or in the federal government. So my big issue is, and this may be something that's been workshopped with the Commissioners, where, as you stated, that this is, this is what our needs are, our wants as a Board. I just don't know what's important to you all. And that's why, the more I thought about this and looking at these goals, there's more goals that I think I'd want in there. Commissioner Myers, there may be some goals you want in there. Some of the stuff looked a little bit outdated to me as well. So what I would like to do is, I'd like to make a motion to table this and for us to do a workshop similar to what we just did. Nothing, Commissioners, don't, I'm not saying let's come in here. I'm saying let's do another one on teams, where we can all talk about this. I think it would be a quick workshop because I would like to get each individual Commissioner's opinions on how we want to lobby to the state and the federal government. Because at this point, I really, I don't know. So that's why I wanted to make a motion just to table this so that we can have an opportunity as a collective body to discuss this, to discuss this in depth, because there may be some things we want to add, subtract, or we may want to leave it just how it is. So that's my motion, is just to table this so that we can do a very quick workshop so that we can discuss these items a little more in depth.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Owen. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Commissioner Winstall. Commissioner Kemp?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve this and move forward at this time. And speaking to that, I'll just say, we have significantly redone this list. It was very, very different just a year or two ago. And has significantly been actually tailored down. And it was, and a lot of things that were on it have been very, very, very streamlined. But there was, it has been worked over with, I know, not necessarily with the new Commissioners to here at this time. But we would lose opportunities right now if we were to wait, workshop this, start to, you know, figure this out. If that's something that wants to be done later on, I think that's fine. But, I mean, this is the kind of thing that you were looking for even months ago. I know we haven't been able to focus on this. But certainly, right now, I'd just like to move forward with what we have. And I think if there's other considerations to be, to be made with regards to this, it can be made. But this is, this is a really bad time to be holding up Hillsborough County's input on these issues because we're not, we're not passing this at this time. So, I mean, again, I have a substitute motion just to put, move this forward at this time. And then if there's, I think, another, you know, somebody wants to workshop and change the list. But I really think that that's, it's very late in the season to be doing that. And I'm, I feel like the list is, is not antiquated and is not, you know, isn't in need of emergency repair at this time.
Second.
We got a substitute motion by Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Myers, you recognized?
Yes. We, as Commissioners, we know we missed the delegation meeting. But I'm going to say, we have to trust our staff. We have the opportunities to submit items that we would like to move forward with the state. We, as Commissioners, we have the opportunity to work with our delegation on specific projects. The only thing that I would say, I do support the home rule because every time there's a liability, there's more money and unbudgeted funds that we don't have. And so I'm going to support what the staff is asking us. Thank you.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes, and thank you, Commissioners. And I'll just tell you, just as my comments on that as a policy, I'm not going to, and this is for staff as well, ever blindly just trust staff. Nothing to do with your hard work. You guys are great. It's the best staff I've ever worked with. But I'm an elected official, and it's my duty to be a gatekeeper for the people of District 4. So I always want to roll up my sleeves on every single issue. And I think this is important. And to what Commissioner Kemp was alluding to, is all the more reason, I think, to table this is because, yes, I believe this has been worked on for a long time. I've been here since November, and I know there's other Commissioners here as well. Again, I have no idea, Commissioner Sepeda or Winstall, or even the existing Commissioners, what's important to you on the state and federal level. So I won't be supporting it. I'll be voting no, not because I don't believe in everything that's in there, just because I don't, I don't know, I don't know if I want to add or take away, and while I respect things may have been worked on for a long time. This is a new Board, and that's why, well, I guess we have a substitute motion first that has to be heard, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have.
Commissioner Winstall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there a time, is there a timeline availability? That question hasn't been asked yet, if, to make some short modifications, if there is. I mean, it's exactly what he said. Commissioner Kemp kind of proved the point that there are three new Commissioners, and they deserve a chance.
Sure. And Commissioners, none of this process was meant to exclude anybody. Please take it that way. We are on a short timeline. We've had some staff changeover. So that won't be an issue as we go forward. That being said, session starts in 20 days. And so what we, I would also suggest to you, Commissioners, is this can be modified at any time. So if there's something to be added today, if there's something to be added on March 1st, the Board has the discretion to do that. This is the Board's program. And we know that things are going to change in the next two weeks because bill filing deadline has not come to its conclusion yet. There are still lots of bills to be filed. So a legislative session is very fluid. Things happen quickly. And that's, again, why we provide information to you on an ongoing basis as to what's happening, and are certainly open to any amendments that you want to make to the program as we move forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
My real issue here is time. It's February 15th, and for all intent and purposes, it's, everything in Tallahassee's already started. And if we wait until even March 1st to put something, we're going to have nothing. So I am happy to workshop it. I would love to hear what everybody's thoughts are on... hear what everybody's thoughts are on, and if there's anything that needs to be changed, we could do it, I think, relatively quickly. But I think we ought to go ahead and pass what we have first, and then we can always change it within a couple of weeks if we need to. But there is too much in here that has already been well thought through, that I really don't think, at the end of the day, are going to be things that anybody's going to have a problem with, at least the majority of it. And it might be a very big problem for us not to have some of this stuff at least down and in the hopper as the legislature starts.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. And I share your thoughts. I understand where Commissioner Owen's coming from. And candidly, if I was in his position, or Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, or Wostol, I'd probably feel the same way. But I think, at the end of the day, this is time-sensitive. It can be modified at any time. A lot of work has gone into it. Do I agree or fully support 100% of the items? Probably not. I'd want to see some changes. So, I would support having a workshop to consider reprioritizing our requests. But I think we do need to go forward today with what we have. So, I'm going to support the substitute motion. Okay, the substitute motion by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Any, no other comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, Owen, and Wostol voted no.
All right. Thank you. Next item?
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
The next item is Item B5. This is to approve the fiscal year 23 budget amendment resolution to accept the Gibsonton area septic-to-sewer conversion project grant. And Lisa Ray is going to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Board, for having me here. My name's Lisa Ray, Director of Water Resources. Last month, you approved an agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for a $20.35 million grant for septic-to-sewer conversion in the Gibsonton area. This motion that we are asking you to approve is to now incorporate that grant into our budget process. With that, I'm happy to entertain any questions, and I recommend approval. Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. No comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven is zero.
Next item?
Just one fast comment?
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. I just want to say that this is an excellent move for Gibsonton. This is really something that has been very, very long awaited. It's really going to give opportunity for realizing some of the things that I've heard from people in Gibsonton, and, you know, businesses can't locate in these places that are working on septic and without sewer. And it's really a great opportunity. I'd just like to point out also, just for our knowledge, because I've said a lot about the getting up to speed in the urban service area with septic and sewer. This is $20 million from the state for a match, or, I'm sorry, from the federal government for a match through the American, the public rescue, or the COVID dollars, and 20 million from the county. We're talking $40 million for Gibsonton to do what has been out there for decades and decades and decades. And I think we have some 25,000 homes in the urban service area that still don't have urban services, as far as this is concerned. So, I'd just like to point out that big cost for us to understand. And I think this will be a wonderful thing for Gibsonton and for Hillsborough County. And thank you, staff, for working so hard on this, because I know it's, this, again, has been something that we've been really focused on. It's been good work.
Okay. Bonnie?
Thank you. Commissioners, you have three staff reports upcoming. The first one is Item G1. This is to receive a report regarding the issue of vaping businesses near schools. Commissioner Owen, you had to ask for this report. We have Joe Gross here, and also representatives from the county attorney's office as well. Thank you.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. At your December, and I'm hoping the slides will come up. At the December 7th meeting, staff were directed to identify the number of existing businesses selling vaping products and devices within 500 feet of a school. We were also asked to research other jurisdictions that have regulated vaping businesses near schools, and to include some of the impacts from those regulations. So, a quick overview of what vaping is. Vaping involves devices that heat liquid substances, and then, and they're also called e-cigarettes. They're called vape pens, vapings, and they have lots of different brand names. But sometimes, they contain nicotine, sometimes are other chemicals and flavors, popular with young adults and teens. And our current ordinance prohibits underage sales, but it doesn't regulate the proximity of businesses to schools. So, to get to the point of where are we, in terms of locations, code enforcement established a baseline of identifying about 2,000, next slide, please, 2,000 businesses that either had a Department of Business and Professional Regulation, or a Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Service permits for tobacco, nicotine, or hemp products. You may remember, we did the research on hemp products with the Delta 8 project. Using the school district information and 911 records, we worked with geomatics and determined that there are 450 public, private, elementary, middle, and high schools. And then, using the geometric systems, determined there was 200 retailers within 500 feet of a campus, about 95 of those in the unincorporated area. I'd like to turn it over now to Whitney Green and Johanna Lundgren on some of the legal aspects.
Thank you, Joe. Good morning, commissioners. Whitney Green, County Attorney's Office. So, to address the second part of the board's request, if I could have the next slide, please. We researched what other jurisdictions are doing to regulate vaping specifically near schools. As further detailed in our written report, we found a total of five jurisdictions that use three different models to address this issue. The first model restricts the location of vape and smoke shops via zoning and land use regulations, and there are three jurisdictions who are using this approach. Their respective land development codes prohibit smoke and vape shops from locating within a specified number of feet of a school. And regulations in all three of these locations were prospective when they were adopted, so existing businesses were not required to cease operations. However, new retailers wanting to operate have to comply with those new zoning restrictions. The second model focuses on individual users. One jurisdiction has adopted this model. They have an ordinance that prohibits vaping within 1,000 feet of a school. And the final model that we found is a product-based retail sales restriction that prohibits retailers from selling vape products near schools. However, the only jurisdiction that we are aware of that has adopted this model did so prior to some state legislation that impacts the legal viability of this approach. So, considering that research on the other jurisdictions and the applicable law, which is also detailed further in the report, we have set out two regulatory options for the board to consider. Next slide, please. The first of those options is the individual user model that prohibits people from vaping near a school. This type of regulation could be enforced via civil citation and county ordinance. The second option would be to follow the land use zoning model by amending the land development code to prohibit vape shops from locating near a school. And Johanna Lundgren, from our Real Estate and Development Division, is available to give more details about that option.
Any other comments? Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. As Ms. Green briefly touched on, we did research other jurisdictions, zoning restrictions on retail vaping businesses, and found that the cities of Miami Beach, Hialeah, and Lighthouse Point provide examples of distance requirements, minimum distance requirements between vape shops and schools. Hialeah's ordinance prohibits them from locating within 1,000 feet of a school, while Miami Beach and Lighthouse Point ordinances restrict the businesses from location within 500 and 250 feet, respectively. And consistent with these other jurisdictions, it is a possibility for the board to adopt a land development code amendment that would prohibit new vaping retailers from being located within a minimum distance of a public or private school. And the LDC does provide for the process to process such an amendment and create the zoning definition of the use of primary retail vaping shop, or something similar to that term. And then, we would establish that distance requirement, as well as any necessary administrative permitting requirements. So, if directed by the board, I would work with Mr. Gormley and his team to create draft regulatory scheme, a land development code amendment, and then bring that back to the board in a workshop setting. And I'll be available for any additional questions at this time. I'll turn the presentation back over to Mr. Gross to conclude.
All right. Thank you.
If we could go to our last slide. The other couple options that we had also would be reaching out to our law enforcement partners to ensure that some of the existing state and local laws are being enforced near schools related to vaping, to embark on an educational outreach campaign to educate retailers on existing laws, and also to couple that with a public awareness push on the dangers of youth vaping, similar to what we did with Delta 8. We are available, as said, for questions.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, I really want to thank staff. Christine, you and your staff have been absolute rock stars on this. Whitney, if I was still in my private practice, I'd be hiring you or working for you one day. You all did really an outstanding job. This is such a big issue, not just, as you can see with the, I was shocked, Christine, to see the number of vape stores so close to a school. And I think a lot of things have come out a little bit in the media, that I'm at war with vaping stores. I am not at war with vaping stores. All I want, listen, I want to protect business. All I want is for these vaping stores not to be so close to a school, just like it is in other jurisdictions. And with the hard work that our staff has done, I really took a deep dive into this. And, you know, the big question, commissioners, and I'd love to hear your input on this, is, you know, do we want to punish the individual and create a kind of hornet's nest for law enforcement? And I don't think that's the goal with this. I mean, the goal with this, for me, is to prevent these stores from popping up right in front of the school, because if you look at the front of these storefronts, it's advertising. It's marketing to kids, whether they're intending to or not. That is an unintended consequence. I can tell you, and Commissioner Haggin can probably tell you this, when I was in high school, I was a baseball player, tobacco was an epidemic. It was, we all chewed tobacco. We all dipped tobacco. They marketed it to us as teenagers. I was one of them. And so, what goes on around you, around your school, impacts you. It definitely does. So, I have put together a very detailed motion for this. I'll go ahead and make it, so that we can listen to the rest of the commissioners. But my focus is going to be on the LDC. It's going to be prospective. I don't want to get us in litigation with existing businesses and property owners. I hope that one day, the ones that are really close to the schools will just not renew their leases, or even go out of business. But I want to be very careful with this, because I don't want to create a hornet's nest for law enforcement, where we're arresting the people that purchased the product, and not punishing the folks that are marketing to them right in front of their school. And I think the LDC is really the best route to go. So, I move to direct the Development Services Department and the county's attorney's office to prepare a land development code amendment to require retail businesses which sell vaping devices or products to be located at least 500 feet from a public or private elementary, middle or secondary school. The amendment would apply prospectively, and would not apply to existing retailers who established their business under the existing codes. The amendment should be applicable to vaping retailers who sell vaping devices and products as their primary use, and should exclude convenience stores and other retailers that sell these items as only a minor portion of the store's overall sales. Additionally, consistent with staff's report, we direct staff to reach out to law enforcement agencies to encourage the enforcement of existing laws at establishments that sell these products near schools, and implement educational outreach and public awareness marketing campaigns to retailers and members of the public about the dangers of youth vaping.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Wostol. Any board comments? And I'll just say, I appreciate your leadership on this, Commissioner Owen. Certainly something that I think needs to be addressed, you know, having young children, and through past baseball experience similar to yours, so I can certainly relate. Commissioner Kemp?
I'm also very supportive of this. The numbers are big. The cat's kind of out of the bag already. Might be something you want to add to your legislative program, to have them done in the state, and then, this wouldn't have happened. They certainly had the opportunity not to have this. But I'll be supporting the amendment, or the ordinance.
All right. Any other board comments? If not, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven is zero.
All right. Thank you. Next item?
Thank you. The next item is Item G2. Some of the same rock stars will be presenting this item. Joe Gross and Whitney Green, and also Debora will be here, too. This is to receive a report regarding the issue of towing company rates, use of credit cards, and industry practices.
Thank you. Never been confused with a rock star, but Joe Gross, Code Enforcement. So, last year, the board requested the current towing rates be reviewed, also the use of credit card by customers examined, and to provide an overview of industry complaints and practices. So, I'm sorry, if we could go to Slide 3, please. Just a real quick background. After the Public Transportation Commission was dissolved in 2017, the board adopted an ordinance to regulate towing certification, licensing, and means of payment as a way to set maximum rates by resolution. Currently, the Regulatory Compliance Team within Code Enforcement ensures that trespass towing standards are maintained. Slide 4. No other slides yet. I'll go ahead and proceed. In light of the increasing operation and staff costs, the industry approached the county to request an adjustment to offset some of the expenses. You can see some of them that are listed and outlined in the report. Slide 5. Currently, the acceptance of credit cards is not required with the ordinance, providing for cash, debit, cashier's checks, and money orders. Slide 6. There are several counties that mandate acceptance of credit cards, with some also allowing to recover some of the associated service fees. I know some of the ones listed. The next slide. Among the top complaints received by Regulatory Compliance Investigators are lack or substandard signage indicating that towing is a possibility, payment, as far as means of payment, whether they have a written agreement with the property owner that's valid, making sure certificates are current, disclosing rates, and then documenting when they tow, making sure they take the appropriate photographs. We've put in the report some of the outcome of some of those cases, as well as the case numbers on an annual basis. So, the final slide. So, as far as the options, one would be to continue to research the towing industry rates. You have a chart within the report that outlines the request of the industry, what the current rates are, and comparisons with some of the neighboring counties. So, the other option, accept, modify, or decline the proposed rate changes, which would involve an amending of the resolution from 2017. The next option, determine the feasibility of requiring credit cards. And lastly, to continue our public outreach, you know, we try to notify the public that there are maximum rates out there, and some of the expectations of the industry. I'm available for any questions, as well as our legal staff, who have been very helpful, not just in this, but in the prior report.
Thanks, Joe. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I actually like to move this forward with, continue to investigate the rates, and as well as to prepare, to look at the credit card issue, to, so that credit cards are accepted by, credit cards are required, that you are required to accept a credit card as payment. So, those would be my two recommendations, as far as moving forward with this. I will tell you that I looked at this quite a bit. I pulled up, in our report, we just did pen I pulled up, in our report, we just did Pinellas and Polk County, I, Pinellas, Polk, and Pasco County. And I looked at those a little, and I started pulling up some other counties, just to kind of see what their recommendations were, what kind, how they differed from what we had. And I'd kind of like to broaden, I guess I should add that in, to broaden our research as to this ordinance. I was the only one here, I guess Commissioner Hagan also was here on the board in 2017, and this was all passed, and it was a very small piece of the PTC, the Public Transportation Commission, when we had a taxi commission, we were the only ones in the state taxi and towing, and this was all moved, and it was a big change then, but this was just a small part of it. And when I looked over our current ordinance and compared it to, I looked at Sarasota, Orange Counties, Broward, Miami, and City of Miami, and I looked at it both to compare rates, but see the other issues within those ordinances that differed from ours. And first of all, and I, to highlight what the staff said, with regards to credit cards, I'd just like to bring your attention to the credit card, we've had complaints, and by the way, I looked at our website, and I think that how we file, how the public can go to complain about this could also be improved with regards to this. I had some trouble that I could discuss. But we had 129 complaints in 2019. These are not ones that went to court, some go to court. 51 in 2020, of course, that was COVID, 100 last year, 75 in 2022. Number one, our failure to post warning signs. Number two, demanding cash and failure to accept debit cards, credit cards, cashier checks, money orders. So that, again, is, goes to my issue of the credit cards. As to the failure to post warning signs, I will also say that generally, I think every single other ordinance I saw, they had sizes of lettering on the signs, and the first statement that they made had to be two inches, and the second statements on the sign had to be four inches, and our signs had both of those at a half inch. And it seems inadequate to me, and I'd like that to be also looked at and brought back for comparison, maybe to those others. And as far as the rates go, I'm just, there is just a category that we include that could run pretty expensively, that, you know, is virtually not included in the other counties and ordinances, and that's the intense labor category, and it isn't included in Pinellas, but it is in Pasco and Polk, but it's not included in other counties that I can tell from outside, and it really could significantly run up your bill, as well as the 15-minute block after, you know, after 30 minutes to tow, the next 15 minutes. They don't have such a fee in Pasco or Polk Counties, they do have one in Pinellas, but they, I also wasn't finding them elsewhere. So I'm just asking that, when it comes back, again, my motion is to look at the rates, these are the kinds of things, to include a requirement for credit card, and to also just review the ordinance in general for things like the signage. So that would be my motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. So the Public Transportation Commission regulated towing company rates up until it was disbanded in 2017. However, the rates that you see in front of us, that are the current rates, have actually not been raised since 2009, according to my information. And there are, there are people from the industry here today, if we have questions about some of this. I think one of the problems is that, once the PTC went away, nobody really wanted to pick up the ball of dealing with this. COVID came along, and here we are now, six years after its dissolution, and we have to do something about this, because quite frankly, this industry is subject to the same inflationary pressures as everybody else is. And the cost of labor, the cost of gas, the cost of everything, vehicles, has gone up, and they clearly are going to need some relief. One of the things that I was going to suggest today is that not only do we look at the rates, but that we make sure that every 24 months or so, it comes back here for the board to address it, so that we're not, a future board is not in the situation we're in, looking at something that hasn't been increased in 14 years, where the increases are going to be larger than they need to be. We should be keeping up with these things on a regular basis, so that the increases don't have to be draconian. The other thing I was going to ask the staff about is, my understanding that this only covers trespass towing cases, where it does not cover rates that are charged, say, if law enforcement calls to have a car towed, and I just wanted to ask for some clarification on that.
Yes, Commissioner, Whitney Green County Attorney's Office, the rates apply to both trespass and law enforcement tow. The rest of the requirements of the ordinance do not, it's just the rates that apply to the rotational law enforcement tow.
Okay, so there is, let me ask the question this way. Is there, once these rates are set, do they cover all instances of towing that take place, or are there towings that take place that are outside of this rate structure?
You could have a private tow that would not be, that would not be considered a trespass tow. So for example, if I had somebody towed off of my private property, that would not be a trespass tow, nor would it be a law enforcement tow.
And then the rate could be anything, the rate that could be charged would be anything?
It's not regulated by the ordinance.
Okay, so there are a couple of things here. First of all, I think that the ordinance should be broadened to include all instances of towing that take place, so it covers everything. Second, I think there does need to be a regular review. And then I just want to say this, I, if the board's pleasure is to have some more research done about what other jurisdictions are charging, I think that's fine. But my take on it, after looking at what the industry has proposed and what is being charged in the neighboring counties, is that they are, what they're asking for, in my view, is not at a line. It just reflects what the cost is of doing business. In terms of the credit card issue, I have heard from numerous individuals over the time since we've been discussing this, about the need to look to taking credit cards. But the industry does have some problems. They have the, an issue where people immediately go and try to reverse the charges as soon as the transaction is complete, and oftentimes, these cases end up in small claims court. So I think that when we look at, look, the other counties have figured out how to take credit cards. We need to get to a point where we can do that, but it may take some work to figure out how these companies can do it and be protected. I mean, other merchants in other industries have managed to figure this out, and I think that we can do that. So I'm going to support the motion, but I want to be clear that I, I'm not sure if I want to support the motion or amend the motion to ask that when the staff come back, they come back with actual recommended rates for us to increase to. And I, for one, will say that I thought that what they gave us was a fine starting point. And if there are individual rates that might need some adjustment, or if there are questions about individual entries, commissioners can ask them, but I thought the overall structure of it seemed very fair. And I would just close by saying that I think, given the fact that this industry has waited 14 years for these rates to be adjusted, we shouldn't dally with this. We should get to work on it right away and see if we can't bring the whole thing back and for a landing relatively quickly.
Commissioner Kemp, do you accept his, Commissioner Cohen's suggestion?
Yes, can I add some comments?
Sure.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, I didn't have any, I did not contest the rates other than the single rate. I did not, I was not aware that they hadn't been raised since then, because I didn't know if we set them in 2017 or not. But again, I'd like to add about the credit card, because I very clearly remember this during 2017, is that we had tow, towing company owners who came up and testified that they had no problem with taking credit card only, and that it was not an issue, and we had others that wrote and said that they were, it was very scary to go at night to some places that were very sketchy, they felt, or very afraid, and carry cash in hand, that they had to do, and it was difficult to get cash. And we, I mean, that possibility, for more than the tow cost, could happen to a whole lot of restaurants, a whole lot of other places, many that, I mean, I've gone to places just recently, I'm sure everybody here has, who actually wouldn't accept cash, who, or I had a manager at a very nice restaurant the other night, who, they had to call the manager over to take cash from someone, because they, the waitstaff was not allowed to accept anything but credit cards. So I think that, you know, again, I just wanted to add those in terms of that, I do not have issues with the proposed numbers in terms of this, but I just wondered about those additional fees, as well as signage and some of the other, other issues.
All right, Commissioner Wostol.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Gross, I just wanted to commend whoever created the PowerPoint, that the increased cost of business is a tax that was added in there, because taxes are bad. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Owen.
Yeah, and thank you all, thank you, Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Kemp, for all your comments on that, as well as Wostol. I just noticed, Mr. Chairman, somebody from my district that has been doing this a long time is here, and I know that this isn't too typical, but we've done that before. I would like to hear from some of the, a couple of the folks, or one of them, that are in the audience here, that are in the profession. I would just like to hear some of their comments, if the board would permit that.
I'd give three minutes for one speaker. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Steve McElhenney representing the Towing Association, and with me is Mike MacArthur from Steps Towing. We've been dealing with this regulatory issue for over a year, and these rates, at this point, are critical to the survival of not just the larger companies, but the smaller ones as well. If the commission would like to tweak some of the, some of the information that didn't get transferred from the PTC over to the county, and there are several, it's not just the signage issue, which is, the signs are governed by state statute, the size of them, the placement, and they all have to be visible. So if there's an individual property owner that's not properly posting those signs, then they're subject to the Consumer Affairs Division of the county. And we also do a lot of self-policing. We've brought this industry up and required annual random drug testing, background checks, standardized the apparel of the drivers, and I can understand, Commissioner, your concern about going to a night location for the retrieval of a vehicle. We can address the credit card issue later, but we would respectfully request that, at this point, that you address the rate issue. And then we have, like I said, there are a number of issues that we have to clean up within the code itself. When it was transferred to the tax collector's office, and then to Code Enforcement from the PTC, there were a number of things that were missed, and we would like to clean those up as well. And Mike is here to answer any other questions you have specifically from Steps.
Yeah, and thank you, Mike, for being here. Steps is the standard for towing in Hillsborough County, maybe the state of Florida. They're also the ones that are run to our first responders to help us put up big flags, so thank you for that. We would love to hear some of your comments as well, too.
At this point, we, like Mr. McElhenney was saying, we don't want to hold up any further on our rate increases of the amount of, percentage of the increase of that we've had. Since we started this project, we put in, you see in some of your documents, that, you know, one of our trucks cost $120,000 at that time. Since the year has gone by, that same truck is now $175,000. We have, we have come to an agreement within the Association for Tows that we're okay with taking credit cards, and we'll do a better job policing ourselves, making sure that we're more protected on, if we do get a charge back on the credit card. We don't want to object at that point. We just want to continue going forward with the rate increase to help us, help us alleviate some of the costs that we are incorporating.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, what are we voting on now? So I know that we've had a pretty in-depth discussion, so if someone could circle this back around, thanks.
Well, it's my understanding, based on Commissioner Kemp's motion and Commissioner Cohen's suggestion, that staff's going to bring back, they're going to investigate and bring back, I guess, a rate structure for us to consider, and then also look into, I guess, the feasibility of requiring the companies to accept a credit card. And we'll necessarily vote on that next time, but at least bring back additional information for us to consider.
So we're just requesting information, we're not voting on anything substantive as to anything?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And a couple of comments here, and then we'll vote. And I was around PTC for many years, and candidly, I might have been the only elected official who opposed eliminating the agency. Certainly, the agency had challenges with leadership, and that needed to be addressed. But I felt then, and I feel now, that the additional oversight by electeds was necessary, and Commissioner Cohen essentially alluded to some of that, because some things kind of fell through the cracks once the agency got eliminated. There are many legitimate companies like Steps, and before I even knew the gentleman was here, I have Steps written down on my notes here, so I want to point that out, sir, that do a fantastic job. But in my opinion, and from experience, there are some bad actors out there. I've got a friend just as recently as a few weeks ago, in Seminole Heights, parked on a city road, no signage whatsoever, gets towed, come to find out, small time operation in a bad area, find out, they didn't even have tow trucks, had a tow bar to tow the car. It's just not, just not a legitimate company. So, and many times, as Commissioner Kemp alluded to, it's late at night, you're not necessarily the best part of town, you're in a position of having to get a significant amount of cash in order to get your car out, you're already in a bad mood and a bad place to begin with. And so I fully support the motion, increasing the rate structure, bringing back information on the credit card issue. I think we need to approve that, if not next meeting at some point. Certainly, it's working in other counties, you know, why can't it work here? And then, and not necessarily add it to the motion, but I think we need to look into anything that we can do to eradicate the bad actors and just the illegitimate companies that are out there, because it really puts our citizens in a bad spot. So I support the motion, no other comments. Some motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Commissioner, do we have a timeline on when we could expect to come back? This is a critical issue regarding the rates.
We will certainly do it as soon as possible. I'm a little bit, I think that's what we should pledge right now, knowing the urgency of this, but exactly what meeting?
I know we only have one meeting in March, so in all likelihood, April, at least, we'll shoot for April, but I think March might be a little bit challenging, but definitely by April, I think that should, that should work, right?
Yes.
But we'll try to do March, but that's going to be.
Thank you, Commissioners, and we'll be continuing to work with staff regarding this matter. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. McElhenney.
Thank you.
All right, Bonnie.
Thank you. And our final staff report is to receive a report regarding implementation of future procedures for county surplus property sales, and John Muller is here for this item, as well as Adam Gormley.
Good morning, John.
Good morning again, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. John Muller, Director of Facility Management and Real Estate Services. Joining me today is Adam Gormley, Director of Development Services, and Rick Shantz with the County Attorney's Office. First slide, please. On this slide is just a brief overview of our On this slide is just a brief overview of our county property surplus sales in recent years. I would like to point out that most of our sales are, have been private sales, which a private sale is typically low value, can't be built upon and of use only to an adjoining property owner. On occasion, we do have a large surplus sale for a large property. In fact, the reference there is to the Kenan North parcel on that, on the slide, and I would just note that because Kenan North is really what precipitated this staff report and previous, previous ones, but I do want to note that upon review, this is really a unique parcel because it had a planned development and zoning for 143 units. Next slide, please. In September of 2022, and this staff report was given and, a staff, a staff report was given and, which was included in your backup, and this really addressed the Kenan North sale by providing a review of four elements with regards to surplus property. Points two and three on this slide really noted a further review of impacts with regards to codes and comprehensive planning. And again, that was necessary. It was, as I mentioned, a, a unique sale at, for that, and the board had requested information. Also, at that presentation at the end, the B O C C did make a motion to have staff bring back a draft policy as described in that presentation. Next slide, please. So I won't cover this slide in detail, but it is really, you, you also received that in your backup, but this is the additional language that would be required in any addition to the surplus sale policy were it to be revised. Next slide, please. So I want to draw your attention to the last bullet on this slide first. We're going to go reverse order here. As noted in the previous staff report and in this staff report, we noted that an administrative directive is another option that could accomplish the board's direction. The option would simply require that the words under the direction of the county administrator be added to, included in the responsibility section of the existing policy. Allowing the administrator and staff to form a directive would address the key considerations listed on this slide. Staff analysis of impacts in most cases would really be estimates by Development Services. Moreover, once we sell a surplus property, a new owner could always apply for rezoning. So a po, a policy, in the form of a policy, I'm not sure it would really accomplish the effectiveness that the board was looking for. The board does have other existing processes such as resolutions, think of affordable housing, requests for proposals, which provide the county and the board broad flexibility to accomplish specific intent and outcomes on a property sale. With all of these considerations, we again feel they could be adequately addressed in an administrative directive. And I'll also note that the existing policy dated back to 1981, I believe, so after 40 years, adding those four or five words is probably needed. Thank you.
Thanks, John. What's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Kemp.
I, I think the ask was to add these to, to look at these as administrative, under administrative policies to kind of look, and I think these are, are good to, to address some issues that weren't being addressed prior to this in terms of procedures when you go forth and getting more information about these properties that came up in particular with one piece of property and just wanted to have some better research and information before it came to the board. I look at that as basically what, what this does, and I've been advised that it's probably, and I've thought about this, probably best under administrative procedures for the most, most part because it's, it's less a board policy and more a procedural, by-staff type, type of issue. So with that, I'll make a motion to do this, to add the language and the suggestions to our administrative procedures.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion due, approved by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Owen.
Yeah, I was going to second. You got to me before. So yeah, I agree that, you know, we're a policymaking board. This should be administrative directives, so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
All right. I have no other comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. We could take future issues now or you could waive your rules to hear item B2 a little bit before 11:00.
Just go ahead and do future issues.
Yes, sir.
Any future issues by board members? Commissioner Owen?
Yes, I have a couple of them. May I do them in order?
Sure.
Yeah. My first is to direct staff to receive a report from the Agricultural Economic Development Council for a priority list of goals and objectives for the ag community and to set a presentation by the A E D C at an agreed-upon date. This is, they haven't done this in many years and they actually requested this through me, so I would like, would like to have that opportunity so if staff could communicate with them, set something up for them to come in at whatever agreed-upon date. Next, I would like for ELAP staff to provide the board with potential fee simple ELAP property which could be converted to a conservation easement for agricultural purposes. We are actually in the process of, of acquiring property through a conservation easement with all of our agriculture folks. I think there could be some opportunities for grazing and possibly some type of farming, but I would just like ELAP to maybe possibly identify some of that property that we may be able to work with the agriculture community on to, to have a conservation easement on. Last, I, I don't know if this has happened to any of the Commissioners, but it's happened to folks in my district and it's happened to me. I haven't had a water bill in a, in a few months. It's been zero for a few months. And my understanding with my communication with the Water Department is that a lot of folks may just end up getting a really big bill, which is really tough for folks in my district that have, that are on a budget. Again, I don't mind paying the big bill. They can send it to me, but I'm, I'm really concerned with how that's going to impact the votes in my district. My understanding, it's only happened in 2% of the cases, but I'm getting a lot of emails on it. So I would like staff to bring back a report from the Water Department Division reflecting the number of residents who have not been billed for water in the past four months and to provide an explanation of the issues, reasons why water bills are incorrect. I also want an explanation on the proposed resolution of the billing issues. So I know that we've, we've had some transfer over to Oracle and some, some issues may, are just there with billing, but I really want to get out in front of this because I, I have a feeling that a lot of folks in our district are, are about to get a really, really big water bill. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Bonnie, you got all that? Okay. Okay, as long as someone does. Commissioner Wostel.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if this is appropriate for a future discussion item or not, but it, it seems that the, the vendor payment issue is, is continuing and ongoing and it's becoming, it's becoming a serious challenge for our government to operate effectively. It could have long-term negative impacts. I know we were hoping it would get resolved. I just, I don't know what the correction is and what the board can do, but I would like to figure out what that fix is. To my understanding, the Water Department, who's a different one, is having some significant issues on funding a critical piece of equipment and some of these bills that might have been net 30 are now, you know, four, five, six months out for significant back payments. I just, I don't know if, what the correction is and what the correct ask is, and maybe I can ask Administrator Wise for some guidance on that or what, if there's anything that we can do to help move that along.
You good?
Sure. Yes, this is, of course, is in connection with the clerk's office.
Right. Yeah. Commissioner Myers?
I don't have a future item, but I do have a congratulatory to Bonnie Wise and her staff on achieving the Moody's prestigious AAA rating and your staff, so congratulations.
All right. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and I also want to supplement my request to, from some other complaints, I meant to mention this. I, I guess with the Water Department, we've only got places where folks can, can just drop off payments and a lot of my folks have really echoed serious concern with the inability to communicate with anyone with the Water Department, whether they show up. I actually showed up just as a regular resident to the Water Department here just to see if I could get help and the building's completely closed. And then I guess Falkenburg has a place where it's just a drop-off, so we really need some type of ability for people that are having issues with water or their bills to be able to communicate with somebody rather than holding for an hour or so. So that, that would be my other addition to it. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're at 11 o'clock, so we can pick up our last item of the day.
Well done. The next item is item B2. This is to approve the Hillsborough County Transportation Plan before Josh Bellotti gets started. Just as a reminder, this is relating to the $569 million that was generated from the 2018 citizen-led initiated referendum. We're here because we were directed by the Florida Department of Revenue to submit a plan prior to the 2023 legislative session. You, of course, had a workshop on this matter in January and so the, at that workshop, you suggested various alternatives to be considered, and Josh will go through this for you. As I mentioned at the workshop, we were requested to submit a plan, but it really is the legislature and the governor's office who will make that determination. We don't know. They may accept part of our plan, they may or may not. And of course, since the workshop, the governor has incorporated a process within his budget which includes a refund process. So we stand by, able to follow any direction that the state provides and to facilitate transportation improvements within Hillsborough County. With that, I'll turn it over to Josh.
Good morning, Josh.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations Department. Bonnie mentioned this item is the Hillsborough County Transportation Plan that we discussed at the January 25th workshop, which the state has requested that the county submit before the upcoming legislative session. Staff has prepared four different options included in your backup material based on the board's guidance at the workshop, and I would ask if the table could please be pulled up to display. Thank you. At the workshop, staff presented opportunities for allocating funding among various types of transportation projects, and you can see those listed in the first column. The board provided guidance which included, first, distributing the available funds to the municipalities using the state shared half-cent sales tax formula. As you can see, those percentages resulted in a B O C C share of approximately $424 million, which is reflected in the table, although we do not know, yet know the final amount that will be made available by the state. Second, the board asked to reduce the overall amount allocated to trails projects, but to include an option to fund one particular project, the Upper Tampa Bay Trail Phase Four. Another request from the board included $25 million allocated to HART for their maintenance facility, and then the last request was an option for including $200 million for the Lithia Pine Crest Widening Project. Lastly, I just wanted to highlight one item in the table which is shown as a footnote. The Big Bend Road project estimate was reduced from the amount originally shown in the workshop, and that's to reflect that the county will be receiving $13 million towards this project from FDOT. So in conclusion, this agenda item is asking the board to approve the Hillsborough County Transportation Plan, including the funding allocation that the board selects and to authorize the county administrator to transmit the final plan to the state legislature. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Josh. Commissioner Owen?
Yes, thank you. Commissioners that have been here a while, I don't know how you've done this for this long. I am already exhausted of this issue and I know staff is as well. I, I don't want to get into a long discussion. I know I've stated my position, you know, crystal clear on this. The only difference is now from the workshop and last time we spoke is that the governor has come out and has been crystal clear on what his objectives are and how these funds should be spent. So I, I want to caution us for sending up any type of proposal that works outside of that governor's spending plan. To do that, I think, is almost a little bit of act of defiance on behalf, on behalf of Hillsborough County. So I'm obviously not going to be supporting any of the four. I am going to make a substitute motion on this. I don't know if it'll, it'll get too far, but my substitute motion is going to be, I move to send a report or correspondence to the Department of Revenue stating our full support of the governor's strict instructions on the spending of the surf tax referendum funds.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Wostel. Commissioner Kemp?
I don't, it's, it's not a motion to move any of these, so I guess at this point, I'll make a, I mean, maybe I make a substitute motion, then that could be made after, but I'll make a motion to support Plan A. And I'd just like to say, too, I think the staff did an excellent job of, they've just worked really hard and I was very, very impressed with how, how they pulled together this and briefed the Commissioners on these plans and gave us all kinds of options, especially the, we have staff that are new at this, in these positions, and so, so I'm just, I'm very pleased with what they did. And I'll just take a minute now, and I won't belabor it, but I think many of you got, I just like to say a word for trails, and we got some 30 emails in about the trail. The only trail on there is the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, which has been decades and decades of not being connected. It's one of the number one amenities, trails in actually all the region with 300,000 people a year using it, and that's with it not being connected. But just quickly, trails and outdoor recreation, this came from Richard Menold, and I think he said it well, as long as so many others said it well. Trails and outdoor recreation are a necessity today, both for youth and adults. Outdoor activity yields positive physical and mental results when connected. The Upper Tampa Bay Trail will enable access to over 150 miles of other paved trails via the Sun Coast Trail, Good Neighbor Trail, and with Lakouchi State Trail to the north and east, and Starkey Park, Starkey Gap Trail, and Pinellas Trail to the west and south. It's an incredible connector for the entire state from Cape Canaveral on. Trails are also economic drivers in communities. Just look at the activity around Pinellas Trail and Dunedin and Tarpon Springs. It's pretty clear that trails, that the trails in these communities are, are good for them. Just look at all the activity around those trails. Please close the gap. We also heard from people that wanted their families to be able to use it all the time and wanted to be able to bicycle and walk on safe places where they're not having to interact with traffic. So just a little bit of word for that and a move for A.
I'll second that. Substitute motion by Commissioner Kemp. I believe Commissioner Myers had seconded it. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. I'm going to support the substitute motion, and what I would say to Commissioner Owen is that by not putting money into the HART maintenance facility, I believe we are complying with what the governor said in his statement, which is he didn't want the money used for transit. Everything that is in List A that is itemized out is not, is not actually transit expenditures. It's repaving roads, repairing sidewalks, repair, replace bridges, intersection safety, corridor safety, reduce congestion with specific road projects, and then, of course, the, the trail allocation. I know how much Commissioner Kemp cares about the HART maintenance facility, so the fact that you made the motion for A says to me that you also heard what the governor said and that we're, we're going to be in, in compliance with what we've asked to do. The difficulty I have with, with your motion, Commissioner Owen, is that I believe what we've been asked for is a list for the legislature, and I don't think that's what, I don't know, the governor just said, "Don't use it for transit." So since I think, I think this complies with what we've been requested to, to do, and I think it also complies with what the governor put forth as, as his guidelines. So I'm very comfortable that if we pass Option A, it will, it will be viewed as reasonable guidance. I would remind everybody that this is just a wish list at this point. We still have to go through the refund process and we still have to wait to see what the legislature ultimately decides to do. They may have different views of how they want this, this money spent. And, and I did want to just remind everybody, we did give $15 million to the HART maintenance facility in another discussion not too long ago, so I'm comfortable that this, this Option A list really does meet all of our objectives.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioners, and I, I think A is the worst option, but obviously I don't like any of the options. But I also think that that correspondence and why my motion's important, too, is that we're also echoing our support for the refund process. we're also echoing our support for the refund process, which that does not address in this process. So, we are, the reason why I think that just a blanket, you know, correspondence is, one, let's remember, the legislature has asked us for nothing. They have asked us for nothing. The governor has spoken loud and clear, and this is something we're providing to the Department of Revenue, which I think we should. But my position, which it has been from the very beginning, is that these should all be used in the exact manner, I think, that the governor stated. So, while I appreciate everybody's comments, and I understand that this wish list, these wish lists are very detailed, I think they will hold little or no weight in Tallahassee. And that's why I would move for just a generalized correspondence, that we are going to be supporting the governor's position on how these funds should be spent. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to ask a question to Commissioner Owen. Do you have any idea what the governor request is going to be? You're asking us to wait and see? Have you heard anything? I'm just asking a question.
Have I spoke to the gov? I have not spoken to the governor, no.
Well, I want to say this. When we talked about this last month, Commissioner Hagan, you asked staff to consider the districts, and we do have some projects, and very thankful for that, in a couple of the districts to fund our projects. Not only are we answering what the Department of Revenue have asked us to do as well, send the list. Once the list goes to Tallahassee, who knows what's going to happen? You know, we have not talked about the refund process, but if we want to talk about the refund, how that's going to be handled? You know, in order to get your sales tax back, you need to provide a receipt that shows you paid for something with sales tax. So, I think we're getting too far ahead of ourselves and just deal with, let's try to get some projects done that is much needed here in Hillsborough County. And plus, we all had the opportunity, and particularly you, Commissioner Owen, when we had this on the ballot in November, to kind of help lead and champion to get it done. I know you can't, but that would have been ample time to speak on some of these projects and wait to see what the Department of Revenue, what the governor's going to do. But first, we must take your home first. Home is Hillsborough County. And so, this was a led, citizen-led transportation tax. I was with offer transportation from the beginning to the end in pushing this, because it was needed for our county, and now we're kind of losing sight of what might happen. I just ask that we, as a board, that we focus on what's needed here in Hillsborough County when it comes to transportation and how we're trying to get around in all of our infrastructure, is take your home first. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
So, yes, I'm not in agreement with, completely in agreement with any of the options here as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, I guess, and thank you, Commissioners, for your input. I do respect everyone's opinion here. I know we have some differences of opinion on this, but since we did get in the weeds a little bit, I will remind everyone, this is an illegal tax. This tax was, has gone to the Supreme Court of Florida and is deemed an illegal tax. Whether we agree with that ruling or not, those are the funds that we're, these are what we're arguing about today. So, I am thankful that these funds are in the legislature's hands. I have full confidence and give the legislature and our leadership in Tallahassee full support to do the right thing with these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Owen. I'll wrap it up here. I'll start with what Commissioner Owen just stated. Yes, this is an illegal tax. When our very first meeting after the referendum was overturned, I stated that this, that the revenue was monies, was essentially, you know, fruit from a, what's the old term? A poisonous tree. And whether you like it or not, that was the ruling from the courts. And that's why, that I recommended at the time, either refund process or a sales tax holiday. But in light of that, I like the categories and the funding levels associated with Option A, in light of all the unknowns. Again, we do not know the, how much revenue will be reimbursed as part of the refund process. We do not know if the cities are going to be included in this. And at the end of the day, again, this is a wish list. We don't know what the final plan will be that is approved by the legislature. Yes, the governor made his thoughts crystal clear, particularly with respect to the refund process, which I support, and with respect to not including transit. And I think, for the most part, this plan addresses that. From my experience, the two areas where we have the greatest need and can make the biggest impact on improving our residents' quality of life immediately are resurfacing and sidewalks, and this list addresses that. I like the fact that we're continuing to fund the next phase of several corridor congestion relief projects, especially Van Dyke Road in my district. And finally, and Commissioner Kemp touched on this, so I won't belabor it too long, but I fully support connecting the final phase of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail. I pushed heavily for Phase Two and Phase Three many years ago. It's a 14-mile, roughly 14-mile trail, and we have, but we do have a two-and-a-half-mile gap that needs to be filled. Completing this between the northern and southern segment would provide a continuous 50-mile trail from Hillsborough, Pasco, and Hernando. So, 300,000 visitors use it a year. Is this a priority of the legislature? Probably not. But I do think it's important that we show our residents that making this final connection is a priority for the board, whether it gets funded in this plan or not. So, with that, we've got a motion, a substitute motion by Commissioner Kemp, and a second by Commissioner Myers for Option A. If there are no other comments, please record your vote.
Commissioner Winstall?
Hi, Mr. Chair. At this time, I believe it's required that I state my reason for abstention. I would have been fine with Commissioner Owen's for doing nothing. And one of the state statutes that governs reasons for abstention is 112.311, specifically Section 6 of that statute. You know, I thought about this a lot, and it's been said, this is an unconstitutional tax, right, which should be a huge deal to everybody. And that specific state statute bounds us as elected officials to uphold both the U.S. and Florida state constitution, and also requires us to act ethically in our voting in, quote, "maintaining the respect of the people and their government." And specifically for those reasons, under good conscience, I believe that saying, voting on the use of any unconstitutionally taxed dollars is just beyond the realm and beyond the scope of maintaining my oath to the Constitution and would frankly violate it. I would say that the only thing that I'm willing to talk about when it comes to this tax is the use of our county attorney in seeking restitution from the brazenly still actively filed as of today, Offer Transportation Political Committee, that raised $5.2 million to unconstitutionally tax the citizens of Hillsborough County. And for those reasons, I abstain. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Commissioner Owen? Thank you, sir. Motion carried, four to two. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda and Owen voted no, and Commissioner Winstall abstained.
Okay. Bonnie, any other items?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, we're adjourned.